Welcome to the Xenia City Council meeting for Thursday, May the 14th, 2015. We've been in session this evening since 5:00, talking about our status of Health and Wellness Center Collaborative and our budget priorities for our upcoming fiscal year. We're about ready to begin our regular session, and if you would stand please as we have our invitation by Mr. Brent McNally from Gideon's International, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilwoman Katie Mills.
In the Book of Proverbs, it states that "Your integrity will guide you." Integrity is an old word that we often don't hear much about anymore, but it's important for the community that all of us, all of us, and all the people represented here have the utmost integrity. Let's pray. Father, we've come tonight, Lord, to honor you, Lord, with our thoughts and our words, Lord. I would pray, oh God, that on this night, Lord, wisdom would prevail, that there would be a humbling of hearts, Lord, that the work of the city and the work of this community, Lord, would be done with great grace and mercy. Lord, we want to thank you tonight, Lord, for this participation. We pray, oh God, once again, that everything is said and done would be for your glory and for your honor, that you would be lifted up. We will thank you, Lord, in advance for the results, and we pray it all in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McNally and Councilwoman Mills. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Cowp.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
May I have a motion, please, to excuse Councilman Smith? I believe he is on a business trip this evening, please.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have an opportunity for swearing-in of our firefighters and our new fire lieutenant.
Gentlemen, if you would repeat after me.
I say to me.
I, Gary Pan.
I, Brian Brenner.
And Brian, do you just remember after this? Did you memorize that like that? I was told they told me you'd have to memorize. We'll start from the eyes. Just gentlemen, thank you, man.
I, Gary Pan.
I, Brian Brenner.
As a firefighter for the City of Xenia Fire Division.
As a firefighter for the City of Xenia Fire Division.
It is my fundamental duty.
It is my fundamental duty.
To serve humanity.
To serve humanity.
To safeguard and preserve life.
To safeguard and preserve life.
And property.
And property.
Against the elements of fire.
Against the elements of fire.
And disaster.
And disaster.
And maintain a proficiency.
And maintain a proficiency.
And the art and science.
And the art and science.
Of fire engineering.
Of fire engineering.
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
Continually search for new and improved.
Continually search for new and improved.
Methods.
Methods.
And share my knowledge and skills.
And share my knowledge and skills.
With my contemporaries.
With my contemporaries.
And descendants. I will never allow personal feelings.
I will never allow personal feelings.
Nor danger to self.
Nor danger to self.
Determining my responsibilities.
Determining my responsibilities.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Respect the property and rights.
Respect the property and rights.
Of all men.
Of all men.
And women.
And women.
The laws of my community.
The laws of my community.
And my country.
And my country.
And the chosen way of life.
And the chosen way of life.
Of my fellow citizens.
Of my fellow citizens.
I recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it as a public trust.
And I accept it as a public trust.
To be held so long.
To be held so long.
So long.
So long.
As I am true to the ethics.
As I am true to the ethics.
Of the fire service.
Of the fire service.
I will constantly strive to achieve.
I will constantly strive to achieve.
The objectives and ideals.
The objectives and ideals.
Dedicating myself.
Dedicating myself.
To my chosen profession.
To my chosen profession.
Saving of life.
Saving of life.
Fire prevention.
Fire prevention.
And fire suppression.
And fire suppression.
I accept this self-imposed.
I accept this self-imposed.
And self-enforced obligation.
And self-enforced obligation.
As my responsibility.
As my responsibility.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I say to me.
I, Corey Strout.
As the Lieutenant for the City of Xenia Fire Division.
As the Lieutenant for the City of Xenia Fire Division.
It is my fundamental duty.
It is my fundamental duty.
To serve humanity.
To serve humanity.
To safeguard and preserve life.
To safeguard and preserve life.
And property.
And property.
Against the elements of fire and disaster.
Against the elements of fire and disaster.
And maintain a proficiency.
And maintain a proficiency.
And the art and science.
And the art and science.
Of fire engineering.
Of fire engineering.
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
Continually search for new and improved methods.
Continually search for new and improved methods.
And share my knowledge and skills.
And share my knowledge and skills.
With my contemporaries and descendants.
With my contemporaries and my descendants.
I will never allow personal feelings.
I will never allow personal feelings.
Nor danger to self.
Nor danger to self.
Determining my responsibilities.
Determining my responsibilities.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Respect the property and rights.
Respect the property and rights.
Of all men and women.
Of all men and women.
The laws of my community.
The laws of my community.
And my country.
And my country.
And the chosen way of life.
And the chosen way of life.
Of my fellow citizens.
Of my fellow citizens.
I recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it as a public trust.
And I accept it as a public trust.
To be held so long.
To be held so long.
So long.
So long.
As I am true to the ethics.
As I am true to the ethics.
Of the fire service.
Of the fire service.
I will constantly strive to achieve.
I will constantly strive to achieve.
The objectives and ideals.
The objectives and ideals.
Dedicating myself.
Dedicating myself.
To my chosen profession.
To my chosen profession.
Saving of life.
Saving of life.
Fire prevention.
Fire prevention.
And fire suppression.
And fire suppression.
I accept this self-imposed.
I accept this self-imposed.
And self-enforced obligation.
And self-enforced obligation.
As my responsibility.
As my responsibility.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. I say to me.
I, Corey Strout.
As the Lieutenant for the City of Xenia Fire Division.
As the Lieutenant for the City of Xenia Fire Division.
It is my fundamental duty.
It is my fundamental duty.
To serve humanity.
To serve humanity.
To safeguard and preserve life.
To safeguard and preserve life.
And property.
And property.
Against the elements of fire and disaster.
Against the elements of fire and disaster.
And maintain a proficiency.
And maintain a proficiency.
And the art and science.
And the art and science.
Of fire engineering.
Of fire engineering.
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
Continually search for new and improved methods.
Continually search for new and improved methods.
And share my knowledge and skills.
And share my knowledge and skills.
With my contemporaries and descendants.
With my contemporaries and my descendants.
I will never allow personal feelings.
I will never allow personal feelings.
Nor danger to self.
Nor danger to self.
Determining my responsibilities.
Determining my responsibilities.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Respect the property and rights.
Respect the property and rights.
Of all men and women.
Of all men and women.
The laws of my community.
The laws of my community.
And my country.
And my country.
And the chosen way of life.
And the chosen way of life.
Of my fellow citizens.
Of my fellow citizens.
I recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it as a public trust.
And I accept it as a public trust.
To be held so long as I am true.
To be held so long as I am true.
To the ethics of the fire service.
To the ethics of the fire service.
I will constantly strive to achieve.
I will constantly strive to achieve.
The objectives and ideals.
The objectives and ideals.
Dedicating myself.
Dedicating myself.
To my chosen profession.
To my chosen profession.
Saving of life.
Saving of life.
Fire prevention.
Fire prevention.
Fire suppression.
And fire suppression.
I accept this self-imposed.
I accept this self-imposed.
And self-enforced obligation.
And self-enforced obligation.
As my responsibility.
As my responsibility.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll allow you to say a few words if you want. Now, is tomorrow ride your bike to work day?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Feel free.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of these organizations and Green Cats Public Transit, we just want to say thank you for this opportunity to share about using your bicycle, not only for recreation, which is a great thing in this area and very prominent, I think. I know that I've ridden in the trails around and through Xenia and visited Xenia Station many times, but also to think about using your bicycle as a way to commute. We have in our system a green line flex route that runs throughout Xenia all day, Monday through Friday, 6 to 6:00, and you could combine maybe a bike ride with a bus ride to get to work or to get to shopping or someplace else. The prime example would be, for instance, a, say, a Central State student who wanted to get on whatever buses there, put their bike on the racks, which we have on our buses, ride into town on the bus, get the bike, ride around, go to a restaurant, go to a store, do whatever, get back on the bus, and then ride out there. That ride might be a little far for them to come all the way, but with a bike and a bus ride together, it may be just something that works. So we would encourage people to think about maybe commuting with a bike and a bus combination, using their own bike and Green Cats. So get out there, bike this fun. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we have a scheduled public hearing, a request to rezone a six-and-a-half acre parcel located adjacent to 1094 Cincinnati Avenue. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's public hearing relates to a request for a rezoning of a 6.5 acre parcel adjacent to 1094 Cincinnati Avenue from B4 Plan Shopping Center Business District to an I-1 Light Industrial District. Rezoning is submitted by Tim Caldwell for Dayton Xenia Auto Parts. Xenia City Planner Brian Forstner and his staff have completed their due diligence regarding the request as detailed in the agenda report. Subsequent to staff review, the request was submitted to the Xenia Planning and Zoning Commission, which approved the request unanimously. If any questions on the rezoning, Mr. Forstner is available this evening for questions.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to come forward and speak for this rezoning, please step to the microphone, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Caldwell. I'm president of Dayton Xenia Auto Parts at 1094 Cincinnati Avenue. I wanted to just give you a brief synopsis of what we're trying to do to give you some perspective on the rezoning request. There's a vacant lot that we've owned, I don't know, since the '40s, directly adjacent to our current lot. What we are going to do or planning to do is to make some land improvements to that lot and open it up and create an auction. The reason for the rezoning is I want to be able to auction some of our equipment as well as some vehicles. On a regular basis, we get industrial equipment that comes through our recycling yard that we believe we could upcycle and sell to the public or sell to another business that could extend the useful life of that product versus us crushing it, cutting it up, transporting it, and taking it to a shredder. So not only would it benefit the local economy, we've also done quite a bit of data gathering with our clients. They often have used automobiles or equipment that they would like to get rid of, and they have no access to an auction. The public auctions today have been mostly consolidated between two companies, two very large companies, Odessa and Manheim, and the fees to sell or buy at one of those auctions are just outrageous. It typically prices the individual or a small business completely out of that market. So we want to address that need. Not only would it benefit businesses, but it also would give the public a chance to maybe be involved in an auction and get a better value for their buck than what they currently can do. The only way to get into one of those auctions currently is to know a dealer or have a dealer friend take you. The only other closest public auction might be Goodwill that's out on North Dixie, but there's really nothing in this general vicinity that would serve the same need that we're trying to serve. So the reason for the zoning is I could currently do it just with vehicles, but I would also like to include some industrial equipment as we see fit as it comes through our recycling facility as well. So that's our plan. Thank you very much for listening, and I hope you'll vote to make the change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to care, would anyone else care to come forward and address the Xenia City Council for this proposal? Seeing no one else, if anyone would like to come and speak against this particular rezoning, please step to the microphone, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please. Seeing none, if anyone would care to speak neither for nor against this particular rezoning, please step to the microphone, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing at this time and ask for an introduction of an ordinance to rezone the six-and-a-half acre parcel.
So introduced, Mr. President.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Thank you very much. This time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening on any other topic, if you would please step to the microphone, provide us your name and address, limit your comments to three to four minutes, please. Seeing none, we'll move to reports of committees. And council members, we've had a slight change to this item block. We're going to start with Councilwoman Mills, Board for Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a very exciting time so far in planning all of the great activities that we sponsor at Shawnee Park, but there's also other things that are going on beginning this Saturday. This Saturday, May 16th, is Volunteer Day, and we want to encourage anyone that would like to come out and volunteer. We are going to be working in the flower beds and flower pods around the community and also at some of the nearby parks. We provide equipment and mulch, and we just ask for you to come and join us, and you provide the manpower. One of the great things about this is that if you are a student and you need service hours, we will get your name and we will write a letter with the letterhead of the City of Xenia stating that you have these service hours and completed with us. So that is one opportunity that you would be able to have. We're meeting out front here at City Hall. The flowers and plants are all provided, so if you have a green thumb and you like to plant plants, please come and join us. The next thing coming up is on June 5th, which isn't very far off, and that is our First Fridays, but along with First Fridays is our first movie in the park. We are very excited with the first movie in the park because we get to show a Disney movie this time, and it's Big Hero 6. So if you have ever seen Big Hero 6, or if you like the great big marshmallow puffy robot kind of people, you need to come down and join us. We have a great sponsor, Faith Community Church, who offer popcorn and drinks, and they are free to the public, so all you need to do is bring a lawn chair or a blanket and bring your family and enjoy the evening. And the very next day at Shawnee Park is the fishing derby, and so that will be Saturday, June 6th. If you like to fish, you will not see me with a pole, but if you like to fish, we have it open for ages from four to 15 years old. There's three different age brackets. There's hot dogs, a DJ, prizes for everyone. It's awesome, it's a great time, shared by all. One of the things that we ask if you would like to donate, the kids love sleeping bags, flashlights, fishing poles, tackle boxes, and if you would like to donate anything, then just bring it to City Hall, and we will put it outside of our office area and pick it up and put your name on it, and we'll announce your business or anything like that when the people are there. It's a wonderful time to be shared, and that begins at 9:00. And then on Sunday, we have just a full weekend of activities. It is our first music in the park for the season. We are having the British, Ohio Valley British Brass Band. They begin at 7:00 in the evening at the pavilion. They are a 40-piece band. They are impressive. They need no microphones. It is so great to hear them play, and they have been our opening band now for a few years, and we just appreciate the quality of entertainment that we have, and especially with the Ohio Valley British Brass Band. So those are the things that are coming up in the near future, and I have many, many more things to talk about as the seasons go on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilwoman Mills and Board of Recreation?
One thing, maybe I missed it, Councilwoman. Saturday, volunteers are to meet in front of City Hall?
Yes.
At what time?
9:00.
9:00.
Yes.
If there's any church youth groups watching, or I think that'd be a great opportunity for our school groups to volunteer, do service to your community. That would be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And since Councilman Smith is not with us this evening, we will reschedule his traffic commission report, and we will then go to Mayor Bayless and Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals met on April 27th, 2015, on the following cases. First was a variance request to allow construction of a 3.5-inch foot tall picket fence in front yard to be constructed six inches from the back of the sidewalk at 1013 South Detroit Street that was filed by property owner David L. Damron, and that was approved. The next was a variance request to allow the continued use of a gravelled outdoor recreational vehicle storage lot and a conditional use application to allow a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire strands on top of the fence to be located at 2083 Bell Brook Avenue, filed by property owner Dan Wilson. That was approved. Next was a variance request to allow replacement of components of an existing non-conforming freestanding sign at 17 North Allison Avenue, filed by Lisa Hawkins, denied sign company on behalf of property owner, which was denied. Next was a variance request to allow construction of a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence in a front yard at 200 Southwest Street, filed by property owner Douglas C. Baker. That was approved. Next, a variance request to replace the top cabinet of an existing non-conforming freestanding sign for Kennedy Corner Shopping Center at 543 Bell Brook Avenue, filed by Tim Harner Studio B Signs on behalf of the property owner, and that was approved. And finally, similar use determination requests to allow a social service center in the former Simon Kenton Elementary School at 1087 West Second Street, filed by M. Marlene Leibig, and that was approved.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mayor Bayless and Board of Zoning Appeals, please? Seeing none, we'll move to items from City Council and Mayor. Anything from my colleagues to bring forward this evening? Seeing none, then, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. First this evening, staff is requesting passage of an emergency resolution authorizing application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Grant Program to fund improvements for Saul Arnabitz Park. As detailed in your agenda report, availability of these grant resources was not anticipated this year, and once an announcement was made that funding would be available, staff has had to act promptly to attempt to secure the grant opportunity for our community. Approval of the resolution will allow us to fully complete the application for funding that would be utilized for a portion of the cost of pedestrian bridges in the Saul Arnabitz Park.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency? Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next this evening, staff is requesting approval of ordinance to appropriate funds and to waive competitive bidding related to our landfill mitigation responsibilities as regulated by the Ohio EPA. Both ordinances are requested as emergencies to facilitate the immediate implementation of the necessary mitigation steps as required by the Ohio EPA. As staff has periodically reported to council, the city's long-closed municipal landfill is generating methane gas concentrations that are migrating and posing potential hazards to neighboring properties. Previous gas migration concerns have been successfully mitigated through monitoring and passive venting efforts. We have again been advised that such steps are necessary to mitigate several areas of growing gas migration concerns. In order to accomplish this, additional funding beyond what was originally budgeted is considered necessary, and so staff is requesting supplemental appropriation totaling $44,626 from our sanitation capital fund through the emergency ordinance. Additionally, and for all of the reasons detailed in the staff report, we are recommending that an emergency ordinance be adopted to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract with AMAC Foster Wheeler to install vent wells and gas monitoring probes at the city's closed landfill at a cost not to exceed $164,626. And I should reiterate that that is what we consider to be the worst-case scenario on that cost. We are hopeful that not all of those implements, those steps will need to be implemented, but as a worst case, we want to make sure we have resources available to complete the projects as suggested.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for the first part as an emergency to appropriate the additional monies specified?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cowp. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now a motion, please, to award the bid to AMAC as an emergency.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman[1411.33]
with the Ohio Valley British Brass Band. So those are the things that are coming up in the near future, and I have many, many more things to talk about as the seasons go on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilwoman Mills and Board of Recreation?
One thing maybe I missed, Councilwoman. Saturday, volunteers are to meet in front of City Hall?
Yes.
At what time?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Yes.
If there's any church youth groups watching, or I think that'd be a great opportunity for our school groups to volunteer, do service to your community. That would be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And since Councilman Smith is not with us this evening, we will reschedule his traffic commission report, and we will then go to Mayor Bayless and Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals met on April 27th, 2015, on the following cases. First was a variance request to allow construction of a 3.5-inch foot tall picket fence in front yard to be constructed six inches from the back of the sidewalk at 1013 South Detroit Street that was filed by property owner David L. Damron, and that was approved. The next was a variance request to allow the continued use of a gravelled outdoor recreational vehicle storage lot and a conditional use application to allow a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire strands on top of the fence to be located at 2083 Bellbrook Avenue, filed by property owner Dan Wilson. That was approved. Next was a variance request to allow replacement of components of an existing non-conforming freestanding sign at 17 North Allison Avenue, filed by Lisa Hawkins, denied Sign Company on behalf of property owner, which was denied. Next was a variance request to allow construction of a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence in a front yard at 200 Southwest Street, filed by property owner Douglas C. Baker. That was approved. Next, a variance request to replace the top cabinet of an existing non-conforming freestanding sign for Kennedy Corner Shopping Center at 543 Bellbrook Avenue, filed by Tim Harner Studio B Signs on behalf of the property owner, and that was approved. And finally, similar use determination requests to allow a social service center in the former Simon Kenton Elementary School at 1087 West Second Street, filed by M. Marlene Leibig, and that was approved.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mayor Bayless and Board of Zoning Appeals, please? Seeing none, we'll move to items from City Council and Mayor. Anything from my colleagues to bring forward this evening? Seeing none, then, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. First this evening, staff is requesting passage of an emergency resolution authorizing application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Grant Program to fund improvements for Saul Arnabitz Park. As detailed in your agenda report, availability of these grant resources was not anticipated this year, and once an announcement was made that funding would be available, staff has had to act promptly to attempt to secure the grant opportunity for our community. Approval of the resolution will allow us to fully complete the application for funding that would be utilized for a portion of the cost of pedestrian bridges in the Saul Arnabitz Park.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency? Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next this evening, staff is requesting approval of ordinance to appropriate funds and to waive competitive bidding related to our landfill mitigation responsibilities as regulated by the Ohio EPA. Both ordinances are requested as emergencies to facilitate the immediate implementation of the necessary mitigation steps as required by the Ohio EPA. As staff has periodically reported to council, the city's long-closed municipal landfill is generating methane gas concentrations that are migrating and posing potential hazards to neighboring properties. Previous gas migration concerns have been successfully mitigated through monitoring and passive venting efforts. We have again been advised that such steps are necessary to mitigate several areas of growing gas migration concerns. In order to accomplish this, additional funding beyond what was originally budgeted is considered necessary, and so staff is requesting supplemental appropriation totaling $44,626 from our sanitation capital fund through the emergency ordinance. Additionally, and for all of the reasons detailed in the staff report, we are recommending that an emergency ordinance be adopted to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract with AMAC Foster Wheeler to install vent wells and gas monitoring probes at the city's closed landfill at a cost not to exceed $164,626. And I should reiterate that that is what we consider to be the worst-case scenario on that cost. We are hopeful that not all of those implements, those steps will need to be implemented, but as a worst case, we want to make sure we have resources available to complete the projects as suggested.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for the first part as an emergency to appropriate the additional monies specified?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterbach. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Cow. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now a motion, please, to award the bid to AMAC as an emergency.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next, staff is requesting introduction of an ordinance to waive competitive bidding and execute a contract with Kemper Controls for Alarm Systems Infrastructure Upgrades at the wastewater treatment plants in an amount not to exceed $46,800. Kemper Controls was selected last year to install Phase 1 components for the alarm system upgrades, and due to the proprietary nature of the systems, it would be appropriate to waive competitive bidding and move forward with the next phase of this process. Alarm systems are a vital safeguard of the plant operations and allow us to reduce staffing costs through the utilization of advanced technology.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction, please?
So.
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Cow. Thank you.
Finally, this evening, staff recommends council approve a memorandum of understanding with Bridges of Hope for Limited Intentories of the Simon Kenton Facility. City Council directed that an MOU be drafted, which has been done along with internal review. The MOU sets forth basic terms and conditions for occupying and using the space and limits the term from June through September of this year. Any extension of the term would require additional council action after or in conjunction with the Bridges of Hope update report that they will provide to City Council in September. I did attach to the agenda report information that Bridges of Hope had provided in November with some of the updates on their activities, and I think some of those folks are available tonight. They're earning questions. Again, staff supports doing this. It would provide a use for the building, and I think offer a springboard for additional attention for their efforts in the building.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to authorize the City Manager to enter into the MOU?
So.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lauterbach, seconded by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Councilman.
Just a comment. I'm very excited about this project. I think it's going to be great for the city. And just for the public's information, there's a lot, a lot of good things happening in this city. Some of them, right now, is a little bit confidential, but city staff, Law Director, City Manager, Finance Director, have been very, very busy. We've got a lot of good news coming up, and Bridges of Hope is a very exciting project as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to draft a letter of endorsement for my colleagues in support of Bridges of Hope.
Thank you very much. I have a motion, please, to have the City Manager draft the letter?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lauterbach. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Mr. Vice President.
Just one. As we learned earlier today during our work session, there was other potential hope for that property itself, maybe not the building, but the property to be used for potential rec. center. That appears not to be going forward on this property, so the limit, we're very limited use on what this facility, this property is, can be. So I fully support the use of this building and the land for the community gardens to bring what it just says, some hope to the community.
Thank you very much.
I believe that with a letter of endorsement from the City Council in the City of Xenia that when they go out seeking beneficiaries for this project, that they have, you know, our support, and they can also be able to use that.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question, please?
I'd just like to thank them for their hard work and all that they've done to make this possible. It's wonderful, a great thing that you're doing, and I really appreciate that, and glad that we're behind you.
Any other discussion, please? I would add my endorsement and support as well to that of my colleagues. I think this is a very, very much-needed and important project for the city, and believe it will add a great deal for a significant portion of our citizenry. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Please, Mr. City.
Just a couple of the brief updates. Just want to thank the community for coming out for our First Fridays event that kicked off here in May. We had a tremendous turnout, as we talked about a little bit in our work session before the council meeting tonight. We did experiment a little bit shutting down a portion of Detroit Street. We had a couple of complaints, notably, but far and away, the compliments and thank-yous from individuals around the community, business owners, some vendors downtown, but really a lot of families that just said it slowed the traffic, it made it a lot safer, and it was, it made the car show, I think, a lot more enjoyable. So we'll be looking at replicating that type of arrangement in the future. We have planning well underway for the July 1st Friday that will be working in conjunction with the Independence Festival in Shawnee Park. It's going to be a rather large undertaking. It's a bit of a new venture for city staff, but we're very excited about it, and we're anticipating a significant turnout for that. I want to take an opportunity tonight. With us is Mr. Lee Warren. Council provided authorization and funding for me to be able to add a position to our staff this year, which is for public relations coordination. Lee is a native of this area, graduating from Xenia High School, has held a number of positions of prestige, and we just think he's a tremendous addition to our staff. We're very excited in terms of what he can offer this community to help market, to help provide public relations, really help tell the story of this community, and we've already had him very, very busy this week. He's met, I think, everybody but Mark's third cousin in the community, so we're very excited to have Lee aboard with us.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Lee, you want to come up here and maybe just get you on camera just real quick?
We'll embarrass you a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Mayorman. I'll just take two seconds, and also certainly council members, and Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, very glad to be here. I've returned to the community, grew up attending Tecumseh Elementary School, went to Xenia High School, went off to OU, and actually spent some very wonderful years here in the community, working for James Super Value Store, also for the Xenia Daily Gazette, and I'm very excited to be back in the area, to basically do what we need to do to try to image Xenia and get people to really understand how wonderful this community is. I've had the opportunity to travel around the world, actually, but I'm glad to be back with family. I look forward to trying to promote this wonderful city through multiple communication platforms. I will need your assistance, your help, your input, your excitement, your enthusiasm, and I will be looking to come around and really join with you in partnership to further tell the great story that we have to tell here in Xenia. If there's any questions that you have of me, please feel free to call. You can find me downstairs in your offices, and I will be there. And trust me, I think I will be there for a minimum 12 hours a day, because I've been there for 12 hours a day so far, so good. And Mr. Mayorman and staff have me on a track meet. I'm glad that I ran track. So anyway, that's pretty much it. Thank you very much. Appreciate being here.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Is it true that part of getting the job, though, that you promised to get the Beale Street Flippers for First Friday?
Well, you know, I happen to know some of the Beale Street Flippers personally, and we might be able to work on getting them here, and they can put on a real show and actually excite some of the citizenry of Xenia, Ohio, and they would love to see them. So we'll work on that.
You're on the record now.
I'm on the record now. Okay, we'll see what we can do about that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. As part of our efforts to really expand our economic development opportunities and expand our marketing, as council knows, the Development Director and I will be attending the ICSC conference starting Sunday, so I will be out of town for a few days. Mr. Duke will be around. We've got a very full itinerary. I think we have maybe underestimated the scope of the conference event, and so we'll use this as a learning opportunity, but we do have a number of meetings set up with various developers, retailers, a couple of educational seminars we're planning to attend, so we'll be able to provide a report back at the conclusion of that event, but we're hopeful that we can yield some results from that. So that's all this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our City Manager this evening, please? Councilman.
Thank you very much. Since our city planners in the audience also, can we have someone take a look at the West Park Square property? It has many items that need some serious attention.
West Park Square, you say?
Yes.
Yeah, the...
I'm not signaling on any property owners, but you know who I'm talking about.
There is a property owner that has a deadline that is quickly looming to address numerous issues on their property, including installation of plants and landscape islands, mulching landscape islands, removing shrubs along the bike trail and replacing them with additional shrubs closer to the parking lot, re-sodding those areas. So they do have a deadline that they are quickly approaching, and we will follow up with them if they don't meet the deadline.
I'm happy to hear that it's already being addressed.
We'll report back later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the City Manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, scheduled bills in the amount of $618,995.19.
We have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterbach. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the bills or any particular line item, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
That's all I have this evening.
Anything for our Finance Director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
I have nothing to say.
Anything for our Law Director this evening, please? Seeing none, summary of action items and the updates to the list, Mr. City Manager.
I believe we have addressed the third item, and I believe we have scheduled Andrew Breckenridge from Xenia High School to offer our pledge in June, so.
Very good. An item from me, per our special session that we held, and a discussion of requirement for getting a decision from City Council regarding the streetlight assessment possibility. Pleasure of my colleagues, do we wish to have a special session on that? And we would need to do so within the next two to three weeks to meet a timeline for staff that was identified. Or are you satisfied in your position on that, and we could simply take a vote on it at some future meeting?
I'm good with taking a vote.
Others?
I am too.
Yeah.
Okay. We will not need a schedule for that item, then. We will just, please, bring that up at our next scheduled City Council meeting. I have nothing else to add from that. Any others additions or subtractions to the list? Seeing none, reading of communications and discussion. Councilwoman Mills, please.
Thank you. I just want to encourage people to get on our website. There is a lot of great things going on in Xenia. There's a lot of great things on the, you know, Kill Care, and we have Airport, and a lot of things on the outskirts of Xenia, so please get on our website, check us out. There's a lot of great things. I also want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day. Can you believe it's almost summer? And that is our kickoff, and that will be before our next meeting, so be safe and enjoy your day. And also want to, again, congratulate Alex Brenneman, Gary Fannin, and Lieutenant Corey Stroop for their new positions at the firehouse.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lauterbach, please.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Cow.
Thank you very much. Just a quick update for the community schools. Those of you that have driven out '35, if you look over to the right and look at the new football field being put down, they're about a month ahead of schedule, so looks like all games will proceed on time this year.
Looks great.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you. Want to give a shout-out to a couple people. First is my neighbor across the street, and he's a very interesting guy. His name is Tony, and he does a lot of things for people in the neighborhood, and we had a talk just out in the street and thought that, he just suggested it would be great to have a self-listeners day and just get people involved, and I think Brack kinda is on that mode, and so many people are, but maybe if, at some point, if we could, as a city, come together and do that. I get calls frequently, and I received a call right after this. I received a call from a Mr. Ray Salyers, and he talked about a postman, and the postman's name is Pat Dell, and he said somebody moved into the neighborhood, and this postman went over to this family and welcomed them to Xenia. And, you know, you don't get that often, but how a family must feel being welcomed by a postman to a new place. So that's, a lot of individuals do a lot of great things, but maybe if we could just do more of that. I think any positive thing that you can do really makes people feel a lot better, and the person who gives out those accolades feels good, too. So wanted to mention that. I wanted to congratulate Xenia Christian for their play, Fiddler on the Roof. It was an excellent performance. And I understand the high school, you have the information about the high school play? Okay, I'll let you do that. And then this, no, you do that. Seed to Bloom, and that's a program Central State began last year, and it will be coming up on June 8th through the 19th, and it's a half-day camp for rising sixth and seventh graders, and it's part of Central State's land grant program. It teaches middle school participants about healthy foods, plant life, through outdoor learning explorations and classroom and laboratory activities, and it's really great. It's geared toward the STEM program, and is sponsored by, in part, by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, as well as the Wilberforce Chapter of Links. The closing date for applications is May 20th. If you go on Central State's website, you can register right online, but I know it's filling up, it might be full now, but you can go on a waiting list. And then the Green Giving had their annual luncheon, and it recognizes achievements of individuals and businesses for their philanthropic participation. And of course, that's always great to see all the things that these businesses do and their means of giving back. The Family Violence Prevention Center had its annual fundraiser, and thousands of dollars were raised for the center. And then the Cats, and they were here earlier, had their ribbon cutting for their new home, and that's at the Xenia Business Center on Lower Bellbrook. And I was able to bring greetings, I was asked to bring greetings from the City of Xenia at the baccalaureate service for Central State University. And then on Sunday, by Wilberforce University, I was awarded and presented an honorary degree of a Doctor of Humane Letters. So you can all call me Doctor, or you could call me Mayor, or you could...
Mayor.
Marcia, that works. And then finally, the prayer breakfast, that is the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, sponsored by the Xenia Christian Men's Group, will be on the May 22nd from 7:30 to 9:00.
At a new location.
At a new location, thank you, yes, which is the Xenia Community Center on West Second Street, and that will be 7:30 to 9:00. Tickets are still available, and you can, I left some tickets downstairs here at the city building, and, or you can get them from me or any of the Christian men. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Just want to congratulate all the graduates from Xenia High Schools, Xenia Christian,[1670.01] Central State, and Wilberforce, and their milestones in their life. Personally, want to thank all the First Friday volunteers for putting on awesome, our first First Friday of the year. Special thanks to the coordinators out of that, which is Blair Davis, Heidi Hildebrandt, Joe Ralston, and then John O'Marshall handles the car show, which my kids enjoyed greatly. Just want to thank them for their many tireless hours of volunteering and putting that in their own. And is that...
I would echo that, thanks to those volunteers, that was an absolutely super event, this First Friday of the year. I also wanted to congratulate Xenia seniors and all the other seniors that have graduated as they move on to life jobs, to additional education, or perhaps serving in the military. Our best to you. Know that Xenia is always your home, and we would be happy if you go away at some point in time that you were to come back, or that you would always remember your hometown very, very favorably. And then finally, as the Mayor mentioned, Xenia is having its cabaret, singing, dancing, all that sort of thing, in many different scenes and venues this Friday and Saturday. I believe it starts at 7:00. The cost is very, very normal. I think it's on the order of $5-ish, something like that. Don't hold me to that.